Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the December 6th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that is posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Variano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. I would now like to invite my fellow members, Superintendent Skipper and the Boston Teachers Union Vice President Eric Berg, to please join me on the floor for the presentations of citations. Each year, Boston Public Schools honors a special group of exceptional educators who go above and beyond to impact the lives of BPS students, families, and community members. The award celebrates educators who exemplify a commitment to their profession and who represent the positive contributions of teaching staff district-wide. Nominations for the Education of the Year Award were accepted for educators, paraprofessionals, nurses, librarians, and other support staff. Fellow educators, families, students, community members, and others were invited to nominate educators who they believed to be deserving of this special recognition. More than 400 nominations were reviewed and considered for the award. Somehow, the review panel narrowed it down to seven deserving educators. We're thrilled to honor our Educators of the Year here tonight. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your citation and then remain standing so we can all take a group photo. Kelly Gallagher, Region 8 social worker. So I'm going to read what it says. I believe they all pretty much say the same thing. So I'll read one and then I'll give yours. Thank you. It says, "The Boston School Committee extends its congratulations to Kelly Gallagher, Region 8 social worker, in recognition of being named 2023 Boston Public Schools Educator of the Year. As an Educator of the Year, Ms. Gallagher exemplifies the hard work, commitment, and professionalism of educators district-wide who continually go above and beyond to help our students thrive. Be it further known that the school committee and the superintendents of schools extend their deepest appreciation to Ms. Gallagher for her unwavering dedication to BPS students and families and wish her continued success in all future endeavors. December 6, 2023." Thank you so much. Congratulations. Our next awardee is Tanisha Milton. Grade 8 history teacher at Tech Boston Academy. Congratulations. Donald Melville, grade 7 math teacher at Mildred Avenue K-8 school. And finally, with us tonight, Sally Ng, K-2 teacher at East Boston Early Childhood Center. We have three educators who unfortunately could not be with us in person this evening, but we want to congratulate them as well. Deborah Doherty, nurse at the Jeremiah Burke High School. Beth Myrosik, occupational therapist at Beethoven Elementary School. And Sheila Santana, paraprofessional at the Sarah Greenwood K-8 school. We will be mailing them their citations. Congratulations to all of our educators.
Just wanted to say, you know, as you could hear with the number of nominations, it was a very difficult decision. There's so many educators in our district, across teachers and our social workers, you know, and librarians and so forth that are represented who just do amazing work every day. These seven really stood out, and so we're just so proud that they represent our district. Most importantly, that we benefit from having them in our district, supporting our students and our community every day. So congratulations to each of you. Thank you for sharing your talent, your passions, your careers with us. We really wouldn't be the BPS without you. Thank you. And Eric, Eric Berg from the BTU.
Yeah, I just want to say once again, congratulations and more than anything, thank you to all four of our recipients and all seven of our recipients. I said earlier that I know that the work you do and the work that our members so often do goes unsung, and it's the day-in, day-out, deeply well-planned lessons that really affect the change that we bring on behalf of our students. And congratulations to all of you and on behalf of the Boston Teachers Union, on behalf of the Kids of Boston, thank you for the work you've done for so many years.
I'm so glad we had the opportunity to celebrate our educators at a small reception before the meeting. I know you all have early mornings, so you are welcome to leave and continue your celebration with your families and colleagues. Congratulations again. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 15, 2023, School Committee Meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair. So for those of you not physically here tonight, we have BPS students and others who are protesting outside of the bowling building this evening in support of a ceasefire, and we anticipate... And we anticipate hearing from some of the same students during public comment tonight. We're proud every time our students make their voices heard on local, on national, on global issues. Over the last few months, our schools and central office departments have been responding daily to the needs of students, families, and staff impacted by the devastating violence in Israel and Gaza. We always try to ensure that our schools are safe places for our students, including providing supports during student walkouts, consulting with schools and planning any kind of related instruction, and partnering with the Council of American Islamic Relations and the Jewish Community Relations Council to conduct training for staff and students on combating Islamophobia and antisemitism and any other form of bias. I'd also offer that students, families, staff who are listening or know somebody are encouraged to contact the BPS Office of Equity with any concerns that they have or that they're experiencing. And all of those contacts are up on our website. I want to end by saying that there's a difference between free speech and hate speech, and we will work with all of our students to make sure that they feel supported and safe and understand the impact that words can have. And I think our students have done a great job here tonight. Now, I'd like to take a moment to say a few words about our 2023 Educators of the Year as we just celebrated. This year's winners include three teachers, a paraprofessional, a nurse, a district social worker, and an occupational therapist. They were chosen by a committee of staff from the BPS, the City of Boston, and the BTU out of more than 400 nominations. These exceptional individuals go above and beyond every day to make a positive impact on the lives of students and school communities. They not only reflect a deep commitment and dedication to the students and families of our district, but they also represent the rich diversity of our school communities. And I'm very proud to lead a district that includes educators of this caliber. So congratulations to them and to their families. This week, for a school committee, you received a memo from the BPS Chief of Planning, Capital Planning, Del Stannaslos. This memo is a follow-up from the November 15 School Committee Meeting. It offers additional details on the tools that inform the Long-Term Facilities Plan and further explains that we have an opportunity to create and support a more consistent, high-quality student experience. We are grateful for your feedback and ideas during the last School Committee Meeting and for highlighting additional factors for consideration, including but not limited to projected population growth by neighborhood, school demand, and past history of renovations. Moving forward, we will continue to refine our process for prioritizing investments, and we will share how we are using data to inform equitable decision-making. This will include data on enrollment trends and financial planning. As you know, the Long-Term Facilities Plan is a deliverable of the SIP that will be submitted to the DESI at the end of this month. This memo should answer some of the outstanding questions from the last School Committee Meeting. The memo itself serves several purposes. It outlines the Long-Term Facilities Plan overview and purpose. It reviews the definition of the high-quality student experience that all students should have access to. It explains the development of the four building models through the school design study. While not all BPS buildings should or will adopt a building model, these models will serve as the foundation for future construction and renovation of elementary and secondary schools. We've also included much more detail on each of the building models as an appendix. Finally, it also includes a description of our current thinking around the decision-making framework, the annual timeline, and the opportunities for community involvement. These should all be considered a first draft. We're eager to hear your feedback. We're looking forward to conversations with school leaders and other school-based stakeholders in the coming weeks to continue to refine this plan. We're considering 2024 a learning year, and we expect to refine our strategies along the way. This memo outlines our timeline for the first set of new proposals in the spring of 2024. Our goal is to move to a predictable annual cycle of proposals so that our community members know when and how to get involved. The memo is posted on the school committee's website. Additionally, a few notes about the School Quality Framework memo. This week, you received it. It's, you know, the School Quality Framework assesses school performance based on a variety of student and school success metrics. These include student performance, family, community, and culture, teaching and learning, and leadership and collaboration. The SQF provides families with a comprehensive data on how our schools perform on a broad range of measures, which helps families make better informed choices. The SQF is also a way to highlight the great work in programming across the district, promote equity, and ensure all families have access to rich and necessary information about all BPS schools. This is important to note. This marks the first time since 2019 that the Office of Data and Accountability has updated school quality tiers for all district schools, and that's based on 2022 and 2023 data. School quality tiers had not been calculated since 2019 due to the lack of data availability during the pandemic in 2019, 2020, and 2020, '21 school years. A notice of this update was added to the BPS website, and this data was shared with schools this week, including detailed reports that will help them better understand their performance, both individually and relative to other BPS schools. The SQF tiers and the SQF reports have been updated through Discover BPS on the BPS website for families so that it's in time for the school choice season, and they can be found at discoverbps.bostonpublicschools.org. I'd like to thank the Office of Data and Accountability for their incredible work in ensuring the SQF tiers and reports were updated and ready for the new choice season. I'd also like to announce a few key staff appointments that we shared earlier in the week with our staff. First of all, Joelle Gamari is our new Chief of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, which we call OM. Joelle is a proud BPS graduate who grew up in Dorchester and currently serves on the school leadership team at the Madison Elementary School, where she launched the nation's first pre-K Haitian Creole English dual-language program in 2017. I would also like to welcome Chris McKinnon, who will join BPS as the Chief of Communications. Chris currently serves as the spokesperson for EverSource Energy, overseeing a communications strategy and media relations for the company, which has 1.4 million customers across our state. Prior to that, he spent more than a decade as a news reporter at WHDH-TV and as a morning news anchor at WBZ Channel 4 in Boston, Oklahoma City, and Colorado. In his new role, Chris will oversee the communications team for the district, and he will lead the senior advisor and spokesperson for the district while also serving as the lead liaison to the mayor's press conference. Lastly, I'd like to welcome back Anu Medipah Jayanath, who will return to the district as our senior advisor of operations. Anu will support the day-to-day operations for the school district by providing guidance and direction to the central office and school-based staff. Anu currently serves as the Assistant Superintendent for the Everett Public Schools, where she oversees finance and HR operations for the district. Anu's experience at BPS includes serving as the Director of Grants and External Funding. She was also instrumental in building the district's annual budget by managing grant dollars, projecting revenue, and building grant budgets for schools and departments. Joelle, Chris, and Anu will all be joining us in their new roles over the coming weeks. Please join me in welcoming these amazing leaders to the team. You can clap. A few notes on budget. We look forward to coming back to the school committee next week on Wednesday, December 13, when the BPS Budget Team will provide our preliminary FY25 budget presentation. The financial update will include information on our FY25 priorities and our transition off of ESAR dollars, as well as updated enrollment data. My team and I have been meeting regularly to plan for the FY25 multiple times a day. We know we have to continue the work that we did last year to transition from ESAR to the general fund where appropriate. The work we did last year to begin this transition was critical. This year, we're focused on looking at what we are currently funding in addition to any new proposals to make sure investments for FY25 are aligned with our key priorities. The FY25 budget must be a strategic budget that builds a solid foundation for all the work we have to do to close achievement and opportunity gaps. Our priorities this year are to deliver on inclusive education and create the types of facilities our students need and deserve. We will also prioritize, in many ways, social-emotional learning, restorative practice, school safety, and early college and career at the secondary levels. We will continue to keep our most vulnerable students, especially our Black and Brown students, our students with disabilities, and our multilingual learners with and without disabilities at the center of all of our decisions throughout the budget process. Later tonight, you'll hear from Jill Carter, who's the Assistant Superintendent for the BPS Office of Health and Wellness, and the Boston Public Health Commission Deputy Commissioner PJ McCann, who will share an update on the district wellness policy and present recommended changes to the policy and language. And as I always like to end with a few bright spots, we had more than 600 families attend the annual BPS Showcase of Schools on Saturday, December 2, here at the bowling building. 110 participating schools did an incredible job meeting prospective students and their families, answering their questions about what our schools have to offer. I was particularly proud of our BPS students, high school and middle school, who represented tables, represented their schools, shared their experience. It's always my favorite part of that particular showcase. Thank you to Chief of Family Advancement Magali Sanchez and her team for making the bowling building look so festive and welcoming, and thank you to all of the staff volunteers from our schools and the central office who helped to make this year's event memorable. It was one of the largest. Yesterday, BPS honored Madison Park Technical Vocational High School's Pamela Panter as the district's first School Counselor of the Year for 2023-2024 during a ceremony at the school. Pamela was selected for the award by a committee consisting of BPS colleagues and external partners from among 130 school guidance counselors across the district. She will be Boston's nominee for the upcoming 2024 Massachusetts School Counselor Association School Counselor of the Year. I'm also proud to share that the Elliott K-8 Innovation School ranked #5 in the U.S. News &amp; World Reports list of the top 100 schools in Massachusetts. Congratulations to the entire school community and to school leader Walker. On Thursday, November 30, I attended the 15th anniversary of Smart from the Start, recognizing for its work in education and empowering families and communities, and I was honored and thrilled to be among those to honor Chair Robinson for her decades of work on behalf of our city's children. Chair Robinson has been a champion of this program since its inception and has dedicated her time and advocacy to support its growth and sustainability. So big congratulations. I'd like to take a moment and congratulate Maria Doroski Velasquez, a music teacher at the Edison K-8 School, who was honored last month with the prestigious Keys of Inspiration Music Teacher of the Year Award. And this is given every year from the Lang Lang International Music Foundation. Maria was honored for her unwavering commitment to fostering creativity and inclusivity within her music program and exemplifying the core values upheld by both BPS and the foundation. And last, but certainly not least, a few shout-outs for athletics. I'd like to take a moment to congratulate the O'Brien, Boston Latin, and Brighton High football teams on their Thanksgiving Week victories. You can clap. It's good. That's like... The Brighton Bengals had the special honor of playing Tech Boston, I see both leaders in the audience, at Fenway Park, and I'm sure it was a memorable night for all, memorable night for all. And it would be an oversight if I neglected to mention the athleticism, enthusiasm, commitment, and fearlessness of our high school cheerleaders as well. As I close my report this evening, I wanted to share that I'll be bringing forward some small adjustments on the exam school policy as recommendations to the committee using our most recent data, and that will happen at the next School Committee Meeting. I know that was a long report, Chair and Committee, so thank you for bearing with me, but lots of great things happening in BPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. And before I open it up for questions, I want to share a brief update on the committee's task forces. Earlier this week, I shared a memo with my fellow committee members about reimagining our task force structure. As you may know, the school committee currently has two active task forces: the Opportunity and Achievement Gaps OAG Task Force, established in 2015, and the English Learners EL Task Force, established in 2009. Both were established with the charge of stating that the task forces would serve as a monitoring body after their respective policy recommendations were approved and therefore had no set end date. As Chair, I've learned from extensive training with the Council of Great City Schools about the distinction between task forces and advisory groups. A task force of the school committee should have a specific charge and timeline, including... a specific end date, while an advisory group provides the superintendent with implementation monitoring that is ongoing. San Francisco United Public Schools is an example of a district that has successfully streamlined this work. With this in mind, I plan to add this topic as a discussion item at the committee's annual organization meeting in early January. My hope is that we can clearly define what a task force should be and reimagine our current task forces in a way that is most impactful for students. That includes the committee's School Quality Working Group, which monitors the implementation of the school quality framework that informs school choice. Their work was disrupted by the pandemic and should also be revisited. We know from experience that task force and advisory groups can be incredibly valuable to the district, bringing together a broad range of community members with diverse perspectives, knowledge, and experience. I look forward to working together to plan a path forward that will best serve the students entrusted in our care. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee on the issue, as well as the Superintendent's report. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes, that's one to two questions, and I'd like to remind BPS staff to also be briefing your responses. I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you. Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I will inform my interpreter.
I want to start by congratulating all of the educators who were honored this evening.
I've been so lucky with my son to have very good teachers. My son was at the Upper Quincy, is at the Upper Quincy, and before that, he was at the Blaston.
I know that these teachers, that they go up and above and go the extra mile, and sometimes they use their own money to get all the supplies or the needs of their own classrooms.
I just want to say thank you, thank you for giving everything that you have for our kids, for the education of our kids.
Remember that you are the second person that's most mentioned in a house or in a home.
Thank you very much.
And on the other hand, I just want to congratulate our Chair, Jerry Robinson.
I know that just serving for so many years, I know that it takes away weight on you, but a good one.
Thank you for giving everything that you have for your dedication, for your advocacy.
I think we're very lucky to have the Chair like you, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you for representing the balance that we have.
And my third comment will be on regards to the ELL Task Force.
I'm happy to hear from the Superintendent's report that the English language learners and English language learners with disability will be the center.
I have been the co-chair of the ELL Task Force.
And we have had an amazing group of men and women.
These men and women who have never—they don't know what is a Saturday or a Sunday, and they're always ready to go the extra mile.
I am sad that the eight members of the ELL Task Force, they resign from the task force.
And I understand their reasons.
But I want to tell all of you who resign that your suggestions, your feedback, and anything else that you contributed, that's not going to go in vain.
On the contrary, we should continue to have these conversations around these valuable suggestions, feedback, so this can be continued and with this perspective.
We also need to continue with literacy of the native language for the English language learners, and as the Superintendent mentioned, that this should be the center of her plan of work, so we need to continue that.
We need to keep talking about this so that our English language learners, they need to improve their score.
I want to believe that—I want to be the genesis of the change, transformation. And so—if—because if some people don't believe, we're not going to be able to achieve what we want, but I want to believe, I want to hope that we can achieve this.
I have learned that if adults' behavior doesn't change, then the kids' behavior doesn't change either.
We can't give up or get tired. We can't give up. We need to keep pushing. We need to keep insisting. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafa, for those words. I'm not going to be repetitive. I know you've recognized and celebrated a lot of folks tonight, so I'm going to echo all of that. I do want to give a special shout-out from Ms. Debbie at the Burke, because just hearing her name as one of the folks that were recognized just brought me back to my days at the Burke, and she's definitely one of the educators that made my experience there memorable for those two years, so just wanted to say that. I also just want to recognize the young folks who are in the room. You brought me back to my UMS Amherst days and taking over the administration building, and a friendly reminder that, you know, student voice does have a say, and I'm looking forward to see how you all are working with the district to make changes, not only what's going on outside of the U.S., but also what's going on here in the district level. And I'm happy to meet with any of you, to talk to any of you, listen to any of you. I have a lot of tips that I'm happy to share of what worked and what didn't work, right? Because y'all matter, and everything else that's going on in the world does sometimes impact us here, and the district needs to know that. So, I appreciate y'all being here, so looking forward to see what y'all have to say later. I don't have any particular questions, just very excited to dive in a little bit further on the memo when it comes to the facility, the master plan. I know there's a lot of questions, a lot of concerns around the timeline, what is this plan going to look like, what is being submitted to DSE, so I'll just reserve those questions for another time, but that is something that I'm looking forward to see tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So, first of all, echoing what was said, Rafa, thank you for your comments about the ELL Task Force, how important it was. I appreciate your comments. And as well, echo that we honored Educators of the Year. Fantastic to talk with some of them beforehand and the great work going on. I particularly love the AP program that's been added to Tech Boston in 10th grade even better, so delighted to talk about that. But, Madam Chair, the fact that Smart from the Start honored you—I know you're very embarrassed by us bringing it up, but you are a graduate of the district, you're a former kindergarten teacher, you're someone who dedicated your entire working career to young children, particularly early education. You're the one whom many in this city, myself included, turn to when we have early education questions. We learn from you every time we listen from you. And to find out that an early education group honored you in particular for your work was really great to see. And I, for one, echoing Ms. Palanca Garcia, I am also delighted you are Chair of this body, and you do a great job of working with all of us and with the community. And people have no idea the amount of hours that you commit to this work, and the phone calls you take, the meetings you attend, and the work that you do on our behalf, let alone just talking with us as fellow members. So, thank you, and I was delighted you honored. And Superintendent, with regards to your remarks tonight, I actually have a question about something that wasn't in it, and something you had laid out to us before, which was about the rollout of inclusion planning for the next few years. And I believe since our last meeting, you announced a slowdown in it, in the rollout, that it would be just a, what, 7th grade next year? So, I was wondering if you could just address that for a moment so we could have some clarity on that.
Certainly. So, I think on the SEI definition that the state has, that we're adopting, we modified to align with the rollout of the grades for the inclusion for special education. So, we basically took off the table of the 9th grade, in particular with the high schools, because the work is just—it's very different. And we also felt that we want to make sure that we are expanding and, you know, doing it with right supports, dual-language, making sure transitional bilingual, making sure our one-ways, that our newcomer programming is actually—has exit and entrance criteria that is clear for the family, for the school. So, there's a bunch of work we need to do to make sure our programming is the quality that our multilingual learners deserve, and that includes staffing appropriately and making sure that we're very intentional with having staff that can speak the language for our newcomer programs, as well as our TBE or our SLIF programming. And that whole piece takes a lot of intentionality, because it wasn't there previously. So, that also for us spoke to slowing down the implementation when it comes to the grade levels, and so we will be following the grades as is laid out by the inclusive ed plan that we put forward.
Okay. And as we do that planning, and I agree wholeheartedly when we hear from school leaders and teachers and paraprofessionals in these classrooms, particularly those that have done it well, we hear that it shouldn't just be, oh, you're now an inclusive because we've given you this, but in the planning, involving the folks who have been doing it on the ground, in the classrooms, in the schools, I hope that's—you know, their voices included in the planning process.
Absolutely. I think our IPT teams, right, are—the goal there is to make sure that every school has a plan considering its uniqueness, the programming it has, but starting with the students it's serving and the families. And so, that really means an intentionality around the IPT teams and the support that our inclusive coaches have been giving, that I think are going to yield, you know, good plans. We have given till December 5th those plans, and so that was a little bit of an extension so that schools could really, you know, finish and finish them in the way that they needed to. So, the district will now be looking through them, certainly working with the school and the school community and that IPT team for any questions or understanding as we go into the budget season.
And along those same lines, considering you were talking about the memo regarding facilities plans, just shifting track for a second, it dawned on me, you know, as we talk about schools making changes, building new, merging, rebuilds, et cetera, you know, and Madam Chair and I were out at BCLA, meeting with the school leader there, and thinking about all the work that she's doing to run that school and merge to, but also think about, you know, renovations to the school, et cetera. You know, we have some great school leaders that have gone through new builds, renovations, et cetera, and the more we can think about—as you dig in on the facilities plan, also including planning for the school leaders, the school communities as an integral part of those recommendations. It shouldn't just be you're getting a new bottle, building, you're getting a renovated building, or these communities may merge into a combined facility. It's about how do the school communities and the school leaders and teachers plan for that programmatically, communications-wise, everything else.
So, that's correct. We've kind of said from the start that the human process of the mergers or, you know, any kind of change of grade configurations and so forth, that is as important as the physical. And so, there's a lot of attention with capital planning, working across with our Family and Community Engagement Office, to make sure that parents, students, staff who are impacted are able to kind of help with the planning and are given the information they need around decision-making. So, that is going to be exceptionally important. I think there's a lot of expertise to actually rely on within the district. To your point, there's many school leaders that have been through it, and every time you do a merger or any kind of alteration or grade configuration change, you know, there is—it's different, right? Because it's about the community, it's about that particular school. I'll use, for instance, with Tech Boston, when I was the school leader, I think we merged, I don't know, five times maybe with other schools, and every one was very different because of the students that were coming to us, because of the staff that might be coming to us. So, each one has to be taken on its own merit. That said, there are definitely some best practices of how to get at that. The other thing I just want to say is, on the term slowdown—I wouldn't actually say it's slowdown on the portion of the plan for our multilingual learners—I think it's more an alignment of strategy. That's more what we did, was to use the—what we had submitted with special education as a lens for us to be able to very strategically align the work. That will make more sense to the field, it'll also allow us the time to be able to work to get our multilingual educating—student programming correct, and much more, you know, staff correctly, entrance and exit criteria, you know, and in many ways, expanded. So, I think I would use not so much slowdown as much as strategic alignment for that work.
Great, thanks. And I'll just say in closing, particularly on the facilities, as we talk about potential putting some school communities together, and there's a lot of fear about that, you know, let's not forget, as you pointed out tonight, the Elliott School, which is actually three different buildings, not just two, but three, as you point out tonight, U.S. News and World Report named them the number-one elementary school in Boston and number-five in the state. So, congratulations to Principal Tracy Walker Griffith and the entire team out there. I say that as the school— I say that as the school community member to their innovation plan for two separate reviews of that. So it was a lot of hard work over the years to get to that point, but it can be a model for us of multi-building leadership.
Yeah, I think, just, you know, a perfect kind of anecdote on that, but, you know, Principal Walker sent me a picture, I think it was maybe Friday, they were doing a pizza party movie night for the students. And there were just hundreds of students that had come back or stayed at the school. And they timed it so that parents would be able to, there was some other kinds of festivities that were happening in the neighborhoods. And so it was really an opportunity for the students to celebrate together. And it was just, you could see how much fun the kids were having, you know, this pajamas and things like that. So it was just fun, right? But, I mean, I think that's the culture and, you know, the engagement at the school level of the staff, the staff was all they're supporting. I think that's what makes the school special, right? Like, and that's what makes many of our schools really special. So that's the culture that we're working to build, is student-centered, family-centered.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a question with regards to the inclusion plan that the district is planning to implement. I would like know, I would like to know, if you can explain to me, how does one day in a classroom look like for the teachers or educators and the students? For example, if you have a classroom where you have English language learners with disabilities, and then you have students with disabilities, and then you have the general population in the classroom. So if you can please explain the process of how will that work in a classroom in one day?
So, you know, I may ask Dr. Chen to weigh in on this, but I would say, I think the idea is, in order to support all learners, it's a team approach. And so it's not one educator in the classroom, it's a team. So for a multilingual student, they may be getting their ESL services through an ESL teacher that's either pushing in to the class, could be pulling out in small group. Similarly, if the student is a special education student and they have services that need to be supported, that could be, again, delivered through a reading specialist, it could be an inclusion specialist, or it could be a special education teacher, depending on what they need. But that's being coordinated, like, at the elementary level, where you have a general classroom teacher, and then you've got a team of specialists that are working to then support. That's, you know, that's a bit different than in the past, where there might have been one teacher that the students are with all day, and they don't, they get everything delivered in that one small setting. What makes the question difficult is that it really is about the students' services that require what it looks like for the student. So for the, for an individualized plan, for an IEP, it depends on what those services look like, as to whether that student's getting them in that classroom as a push-in, or whether there's some portion of the day where it's a partial inclusion and they might be in a smaller class to get them. So it really depends on the student, right, as to what that looks like. But it's not one person delivering it, it's a team of people delivering it. And I don't know, Dr. Chen, if there's anything else?
Sure. I would also add, in that team-based approach, what happens in this classroom is that everyone would be receiving grade-level instruction. And that's what's really key and important about an aspect of the Inclusive Ed program or plan. And students, so if a student is an English learner and would have explicit ESL services, that might be something that happens in a small group, inside or outside the classroom, or particular services that a student has on their IEP. So that could be what happens in a classroom that has a mixture of all those students. But I also want to note that depending on the specialized services a student requires. So for instance, our students who are newcomers, who are in their early ELD stages, they may be grouped together with other students who are in those early English development levels. And even in groups speaking the same language, so that they have a smaller classroom with a teacher who can speak their language and support them in the specific supports they need. And that's also an opportunity that happens alongside students who are ready for a more integrated setting, like the one that we've been describing.
Right. I think one of the things that's been missing is that we, as a district, haven't been clear with what are the entrance for a newcomer program looks like, what the entrance for a SLIF program looks like, what the exit looks like. And that's really what we want to go back and strengthen and make sure that that's clear, so that we're not taking a newcomer and having a newcomer go out into a SEI class before they're ready to, right? They've actually met that criteria. We also really want to make sure that in hiring, they were hiring language-specific. Sometimes we had students in, you know, in a multilingual pathway, that the teacher didn't speak any of the languages of the students. And so that became difficult, both for parents to understand, because they think there are students in that pathway, and they'll have some native language access, and they may or may not have. So these are the things that we're trying to get right about the model, because we recognize so much wasn't right about what we were doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
And I'll entertain a motion to receive the Superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
Someone?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the Superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Oh, sorry. Did you hear me?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the Superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 20 speakers this evening, who will all testify during the first public comment period. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the Chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you're from before you begin. We'll begin with our students, starting with Valerie Dam Nguyen, followed by Matt Phelan.
You can sit.
It's okay. This is not the wrong one?
Yeah. Sit. I have to sit? Can I just speak aloud?
No, you have to put, so people on the, um, there's people on the remote right now.
Okay, hello, my name is Valerie, and I am a Dorchester resident, and I am an organizer with the Boston Students for Palestine Coalition. So I am not here to change your mind, because you clearly do not care about the thousands of children, mothers, and fathers who have been murdered in cold blood. Instead, I am here to tell you that you cannot stand in our way. You should know well enough that many students in your public school system are the direct products of US imperialism. We are only here because our parents and grandparents were forced to fight, imprisoned, or murdered during the so-called wars on communism, drugs, and terror. And we are tired of learning about our homeland's own death and destruction in history books while ignoring the exact same thing that is happening in Gaza right now. So no amount of threatening or censoring will silence us. Everyday stereotypes and biases follow us around the hallways, so stop wasting your energy separating us from the real world for the sake of neutrality. Tell me, what is neutrality? Because you have taken a moment of silence for Israeli citizens and condemned Hamas, but you have not condemned the illegal state of Israel or its murder of thousands of Palestinians in the past two months. Instead, you are silencing students who are merely stating genocide is wrong and you should do something about it, we should do something about it. You are right, there is a fine line between freedom of speech and hate speech, so we will not let anyone co-opt our message and weaponize the beautiful religion of Judaism to silence our fight against imperialism.
30 seconds.
By actively condemning our movements, administrations show that there is no neutrality during a genocide. Why do we go to school to learn history, to analyze and plan what we can do better for the future, if you are refusing to let us change the present? At the end of the day, you are telling your students that all of our efforts to learn in school to then change the world are futile. There has already been three Boston Public School, High School walkouts, and BSPC is affiliated with even larger organizations. All of this is to say, if you continue to ignore the thousands of students who have been martyred by Israel, continue to ignore the burning schools in Gaza, continue to not teach the truth, there are 116 more Boston Public Schools that we are not afraid to disrupt the learning of, and every single one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Phelan, followed by Amira Redwing.
I am Matt Phelan, a senior at Boston Latin School and organizer with the Boston Students for Palestine Coalition, and I live in Alston. Last Friday, we walked out because administrators refused to acknowledge the genocide on Palestinians by Israel, and instead succumbed to their own prejudices and the pressure of Zionists. Every day, our institution asks us to take a stand on the right side of history, but when faced with student organizing, administrators immediately responded with threats and suppression. They keep telling us a time will come to discuss recent events, but it's been two months since Israel declared war on Palestine and nearly 75 years since the Nakba. You cannot wait for the right time to discuss genocide, the time is now. You cannot have these discussions in a safe space if that safe space fosters Zionist sentiment, because those ideas are what's responsible for the massacre of tens of thousands of Palestinians. You cannot sit idly until it is too late, only to look back and wish you had done something sooner. We act now, we power through baseless accusations of antisemitism, because we know that the Palestinian struggle for national liberation is a right and just cause. Boston is the site of a genocide on the Wampanoag and Massachusetts tribes, and it is our imperative as residents to interfere when we see another genocide occur. This is why we call for Boston Public Schools to sign a resolution for a permanent ceasefire and implement education in its schools about the genocide. We have the opportunity to set a precedent for schools across the United States and around the world, so I ask you, what side are you on?
Our next speaker is Amira Redwing, followed by Rahma Ba.
Hello, my name is Amira Redwing. I'm a senior at Boston Latin School and an organizer for the Boston Students for Palestine Coalition, and I'm from Dorchester. Today, I'm here, as most Brown students are, to stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people and call for the condemnation of Israel and apartheid regime that is actively committing a genocide disguised under the facade of self-defense. As a student, I have been told for the past 12 years of the significance of my education, how critical it is that I learn the woes of the past, the wonders of the present, and arm myself with the essential academia needed to propel great nations into the future. As you sit here today as representative of those who care about nurturing our young minds, as you sit here as individuals who hold our educational prospects in the palms of your hands, you are responsible for the future generations. You are responsible, yet you criticize and silence us when we use the knowledge we gain from your institutions to critically evaluate the world around us. You expect future leaders, but police young minds. But we will not stand for surveillance, we will not stand for censorship, or anything but the truth, because the truth is that 40% of schools in Gaza have been bombed and destroyed. What that says to me, and what it should say to you, is that the Israeli government does not care about the education of a generation set to change the world. So far, three Boston Public Schools have witnessed walkouts, because despite your attempts to belittle us as young students incapable of understanding the so-called nuances of the genocide, we recognize that as we are learning, schools are burning. As you said, the FY25 budget must be strategic and create the facilities students, especially your Brown and Black students, need. So please, join us, condemn the unethical and immoral use of American dollars, condemn the killing of Brown students in Palestine the way you say you want to protect Brown students here. Listen to your Brown and Black students, and free, free Palestine, because more than 6,000 Brown students have been murdered. So if you aren't taking a stand now, when? If not a permanent ceasefire now, when? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rahma Ba, followed by Aaliyah Mohammed.
Hello, my name is Rahma Talib Ba. I am 17 years old, I reside in Dorchester, and I am a current student in the BPS school system. I am part of the Boston Students for Palestine Coalition that organized the walkout at BLS on December 1st. As you may know, we organize that walkout not only to show our support for Palestine and to demand the Boston City Council to formally call for a ceasefire, but also because of the censorship placed on students when trying to speak out about Palestine and the ongoing genocide. We learn in our classes about things like the Holocaust, the ongoing conflicts in Ukraine, and other violations of human rights. Why is this any different? The Palestinians outcry and Palestine protests are a battle for the most fundamental human rights that every human should have. There is this double standard that we hold when talking about issues like this, where it suddenly becomes complicated when the lives of Black or Brown people are on the line. Today, I am here to address the guidelines and sentiments set by the BPS Office of Equity labeling the phrase "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free" as anti-Semitic. This phrase, this phrase is not a call for the mass murder of Jewish people, but for the end of an apartheid state and the demand for decolonization. As my fellow Boston community member and professor at Northeastern, Sarah Constanza said a few days ago at the Cambridge City Council meeting, "If you believe 'from the river to the sea' means killing millions of Jews, please question the fair racism and Islamophobia you've learned from both the United States and the Israeli state propaganda." BPS's complicity in vilifying and stigmatizing phrases like these in turn vilifies and takes away from the movement and allows for our schools to then censor and silence students who want to speak out and learn about the ongoing atrocities Palestinians have been going through for the past 75 years and 60 days. My final demand and ask of you today is for the Board of Equity within BPS to revisit and revoke its statements and rulings.
Hello, my name is Aaliyah Mohammed, and I am a senior at New Mission High School, and I am a part of the Roxbury community. On November 30th, we organized a successful walkout in solidarity with Palestine, because our, the Palestinian flag was ripped off from our school. Shame! And when confronted to, when brought this concern to our principal, he agreed with the taking down of the Palestinian flag. I'm here today to highlight the concerns with the Boston Public Schools. You say our educations, you guys teach us to be socially aware, focus on justice, and to critically think. We face contradictions here. You taught us to use our voices for others, but discourage us from speaking against injustices. As humans, as a human with compassion and feelings, this absolutely hurts me and witnessing these injustices. I would like to also express my concerns about the most recent communications with students from New Mission High School. We crafted- We crafted a well-thought-out letter regarding our New Mission letters about the Boston Public Schools superintendent and the board members, and you guys seem to have missed the point. We urge you guys to rethink this responding to our next email. Thank you for your attention, and I encourage you to support us and provide us an environment where students can feel comfortable expressing their thoughts and using their voices to advocate for change. Let's work together for a future where all students, our voices, are heard and respected and not silenced because of fear within our education system. I encourage you all today to fight for what you believe in and don't let adults silence you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sochi Ty Dawson.
Sorry, one second. Hello, my name is Sochi Ty Dawson, and I'm a senior at Boston Latin School. Today, I want to address the lack of education and discussion on the atrocities that have been occurring between Israel and Palestine since 1948. This lack of education on the history between the two countries have led to a lack of knowledge on the issue today and the events leading up to the issues on October 7th. Us as BPS students have felt the hole in the lack of education that that lack of education leaves in our schools and our whole community. We have not been allowed to talk and discuss the unethical murdering the Israeli government has been conducting, and this has harmed our community. Students have been afraid of even mentioning the topic because they have been immediately shut down by our school administration. There have been no spaces for students, even those who aren't Jewish, Israeli, Muslim, or Palestinian, but still feel for the innocent loss of lives and haven't been able to come together to learn from one another. Education isn't the same as taking a position or supporting one group. Instead, it is allowing schools and educators to do their job, which is creating an environment where students aren't forced into silence. The topic of antisemitism has been brought up many times when trying to figure out how to talk about Israel and Palestine in a productive way. How is sticking up for the thousands of people being killed and whose stories are being ignored antisemitic? BPS's administration are ignoring the bigger issue that comes from censoring their students. You all believe that not talking about it, you are creating a peaceful learning environment, when in reality, you have taken away the only place where students can educate themselves by taking away the opportunity for discussion. I urge you to think about the harm censorship does to students who are experiencing the hate, war, and genocide in the world and have no outlet to discuss it. And I implore you to open those discussions, not only about what is happening in Palestine, but every other humanitarian crisis being ignored around the world. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Delite Tualde.
My name is Delia Tualde. I'm a Boston Latin School student. I'm from Dorchester. I would like to ask about the legitimacy of the censorship that has been taking place at the Boston Public Schools. We, as students and global citizens, have a right to speak out against the cruel and horrific acts against Palestinians. Today, I saw a picture of Gaza on fire, and then I saw a video of Israeli women dancing at the thought of a Starbucks being built on top of Gaza after they leveled it. Witnessing the collective ignorance that so many people have adopted, as they call people like myself antisemites, has been mind-boggling. It is not antisemitic to advocate for the 2 million people that are being slowly killed. There have been testimonies of people in hospitals where they have maggots crawling from their wounds, people suffering from the effects of white phosphorus, people that have lost every single person in their family. There are 5,000, upwards of 5,000, children dead. It's not hate speech to acknowledge that those people didn't deserve it. It's not hate speech to say that Israel is creating war crimes. It's not hate speech to say that Palestinians deserve their homes back. Israel has not hidden their contempt for all Palestinians. The Israeli government officials know what they are doing, and they will not stop until Gaza is decimated and the West Bank is repopulated with Israelis. Why are students not allowed to speak about the truth of the situation? Why is it hate speech to recognize that this is an atrocity and Palestine should be free? It's hard to feel safe in school knowing how easily kids just like me can be killed while world leaders turn a blind eye.
Our next speaker is Victoria Mabbington.
Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Mabbington, and I am a senior at Boston Latin School, and I live in East Boston. Each year at Boston Latin School, we have a student-run, school-wide event called Human Rights Day, in which we tackle various human rights violations around the world and through history. Despite its undeniable relevance and importance, we were not allowed to address the Israel-Palestine conflict. We were silenced. Students who ran the event were told that those who even wore the colors of the Palestinian flag would not be able to participate in the event. We were silenced. Students spent months preparing for their presentations, but this ultimatum was given to them at 9:30 PM the night before, with no opportunity for discussion. Students in the audience had planned to paint watermelons on their shirt and wear kafias and stand in solidarity with Palestine, but administration threatened them that it would result in disciplinary action. We were silenced. Additionally, the traditional open mic for students to ask questions and read out statistics was taken away that day by administration without discussion. Students were told this was due to time reasons, which is simply untrue. We were lied to. We were silenced. Administration claimed they wanted to create a united front despite ignoring students' voices and opinions, speaking over our voices. We were silenced. We condemn Boston Public Schools, who administration looks to for direction and guidance for silencing students who speak out. Wearing colors in solidarity is not unsafe. Painting on t-shirts is not unsafe. Wearing scarves is not unsafe. Students should not face disciplinary action or be threatened in disrespectful ways for expressing their freedom of speech. Stop silencing students and educators. For the sake of your students, let us speak now. For the sake of your educators, let them educate now. This is urgent. This is happening now. Ask yourself, if not now, when? Thank you.
Chair, as is often, you know, when we have students who passionately are speaking about something, we will often take a recess so that school committee can actually greet the students. So I would just suggest that we be able to do that.
Yes. So yes, I would like to take a brief recess so that we can meet with the students to discuss this issue. We thank you for your voices this evening, but would like to have another moment to be able to address you. So we are going to take a recess. Oh, Gavlin. We're resuming the meeting, and we will continue with public comment.
Thank you, Chair. Our next speaker is John Mudd, followed by Christine Langhoff. Christine, would you like to go since you're with us?
Mr. Mudd is here.
He's in the room?
Yes, he's there. He's back there.
Oh, he moved. Thank you.
Mr. Rudd?
Mr. Mudd, are you prepared to testify? Okay, take it down.
I apologize. I didn't realize you were back. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge, but a longtime education advocate in Boston. It's hard to follow such commitment and passion from the students, but I have my other causes for advocacy, which you know. You say you want to be sure that there is authentic parent and community engagement to build trust in your decisions. But in the long-term facilities planning document presented at the last at the last school committee meeting, BPS is repeating the failed process that has caused the very mistrust you say you want to overcome. I assume some of you saw the four hours of testimony last night about the failed process on the O'Briant School at the City Council, and the City Council, I gather, has passed a resolution calling on stopping the O'Briant move and adopting, finally, a 10-year facilities plan. For many years, many of us have said there must be a master facilities plan as the context for individual proposals, and then you need to take proposals to parents and communities in draft form with your questions, so that you can hear people's reactions, get their recommendations before bringing proposals to the school committee. That would be a way to show respect, to trust parents, and to treat parents and stakeholders as partners, and to begin to rebuild the trust you have lost. On new building renovations, as far as I can see from that earlier document, it looks as though the proposed process and the timeline is even worse. It shows developing proposals for new builds, which will be submitted to the City Office of Budget and Management, and BPS will then share the proposals with the school committee. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Don't underestimate the loss of credibility that you may have by not developing the master facilities plan by December 31. I'm sorry.
Thank you. We do have your written testimony. Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Langhoff.
Hi, Christine Langhoff, Dorchester girl who lately feels like she's caught in a 50-year time warp. I started teaching in Boston in 1975 as a Spanish teacher at the Wilson Middle School. In 1977, my principal asked me to follow me ahead up the bilingual department. I was two-thirds of my way through my master's degree at NYU in bilingual ed at the time. The precepts of bilingual education were familiar to me during my training in secondary language acquisition and linguistics. There's a specific neural pathway in the brain which accommodates input in multiple languages and which is additive, not subtractive. Nothing is lost to a child who receives instruction in more than one language. It's all gains. If we think of language and literacy as blowing up a balloon, supporting two languages is akin to having two ways to inflate that balloon. The state board had no certification in ESL until the 1990s, and when it was offered, it required 36 hours instead of the old 18. DESI had grandfathered English teachers, but it made no provisions for those who are already working in the field. I did not apply for certification at that time. My own kids were young, I had a master's degree in 20 years teaching ESL. Afterons, I went back to teaching Spanish at Snowden and later at the O'Briant. At both schools, I taught classes for native Spanish speakers, which developed the students' reading and writing skills. At the O'Briant, the third year of study was AP. Every single one of our students, about 120 of them passed, most with fours and fives. The seal of biliteracy came too late for my students, given that I retired in 2011, but many of those graduates have gone on to work successfully in city departments, at DESI, in our schools. One of them, Superintendent Skipper, is your chief of staff. I urge the committee to look not to politics or to cost, and certainly not to DESI.
Christine, you're at your two minutes.
Look instead to years of research on second language acquisition and seek out world language teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jaclyn Rodriguez, followed by Ruby Reyes and Farah Asaraj.
Hello, I'm Jaclyn Rodriguez, and I am a bilingual school psychologist. I've been in Boston for 23 years. I'm grateful to this committee for supporting school psychologists in Boston and social workers. I think we're heading in the right direction. Thank you. I need to mention that we need a crossing guard at our school. Two weeks ago, a teacher was hit by a car while crossing a student, so I would be very grateful, and I'm speaking on behalf of everyone at the school, if we could have a crossing guard on Cummins and Sycamore. So, that's that. I'm here to talk about proposed changes to the Sheltered Immersion Inclusion, SEI, Sheltered English Immersion Program. Since 2017, the Look Act has allowed school districts to implement more programs using students' home languages. However, eliminating programs designed for students who are learning English and replacing them with programs that help to erase language and culture is harmful to our students. SEI teachers are not required to speak the language of the students in their classrooms. Thank you, Superintendent Skipper, for addressing this issue. We have a classroom like that in my school, and it's a very difficult situation. At best, dumping all multilingual learners into inclusion classrooms will result in home language loss, which comes at great cost to students, communities, and cultures. At worst, this program will result in disenfranchised students, increased behavioral and educational difficulties, and an increase in the number of multilingual students identified with disabilities. I'm asking the school committee to help stop plans to eliminate what little specialized programming exists for multilingual students and to start planning for programming that will meet the needs of multilingual learners. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm a Dorchester resident and the executive director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. And I just want to point out that I was really enjoying the testimony of our young people. I don't know why you stopped that. I feel like, I hope they come back and give their testimony.
All of them had spoken already that had signed up.
I mean, I thought it was beautiful. I thought their protest was beautiful. So I just, I want to acknowledge that and just say how grateful I am that they are here talking about a very important issue of a ceasefire for Palestine. So on that, I just also want to say that yesterday at BPS, parents, students, and educators and community advocates also rallied at City Hall demanding an end to the broken promises of school-building decisions and a comprehensive district-wide facilities plan. The Green New Deal has made a mockery of community engagement and racial equity. Building promises have been made and broken, some even in the span of one Zoom meeting. It's embarrassing, but for some reason, the city and district staff presenting these proposals keep saying they are going to or they have plans to, but they don't. The rally was followed by a hearing organized by O'Briant parents. Superintendent Skipper did not attend, despite the hearing date being organized around her availability. Mayor Wu's proposal to move the O'Briant to West Roxbury has also made a mockery of prioritizing the needs of parents, students, and educators. I just want to say there are many different proposals that you all will have to make decisions on, including the budgeting process changing, and so there are many different proposals that you will have to make decisions on with limited to no information, which is also what families are receiving, limited to no information. Is this transparency and authentic community engagement? Is this equity? For those of us who sit in the Zoom meetings where leaders make empty promises then break them, we want answers. As school committee members, I would hope you want them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final in-person speaker is Farah Asaraj. Okay, we're going to transition now to our Zoom speakers. Please unmute and introduce yourself when you're called upon. We'll begin with Mike Heisman, followed by Deidra Manning, Inodera Brandejo, and Maria Mejia. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Good evening, Mr. Heisman.
Mike Heisman, Beja, Dorchester. Oh, though our children are so inspiring, and thank you from my vantage point and Zoom. Thank you for, after they were finished testifying, for stopping the meeting and discussing things with them. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. I'm Jewish. I'm anti-Zionist. I'm not anti-Semitic, and this is a teachable moment for the school system in terms of how we handle this very, very challenging discussion, and I think we need to investigate the charges of censorship. Thank you. On November 29th, Beja had an excellent meeting focused on the BPS's policies for our ELO children. Your policies have harmed these children for a long time. Too many of our children are driven by your failed policies to become semi-literate in their primary language and also in English. Instead, you should be aggressively moving in the direction that would encourage all of our children to become fluent in at least two languages. Last night, I attended, testified at a city council hearing on the O'Briant School.
30 seconds.
Despite the city council's efforts to invite the superintendent, Ms. Skipper did not attend. Two of her staffers did, and it was pitiful to see their unsuccessful efforts to defend the indefensible. Opponents of your proposal did an excellent job of persuading all of the councils that present that this project needs to be stopped. This is, you did not give us a master's facilities plan. I recommend that you use the racial equity too and...
Mr. Heisman, you're past your two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Deidra Manning has not signed into the meeting, and we don't see Inodera, so let's try Maria Mejia, and I'll ask our interpreter to support Ms. Mejia.
Me escucha. Me escucha.
Si, la podemos escuchar, es una valía. Par de francés. Y va hablando, pas, y lo interpretamos adelante.
Si, hola, buenas noches, comité escolar.
Good evening, school committee. Good evening, everyone.
Soy Maria Mejía. Soy madre coordinadora de San Steven en la escuela de Blaston.
My name is Maria Mejía, I'm a mother coordinator at the Blackstone School, part of the San Stevens organization.
Mi hijo estudia en la escuela Blaston y vivo en Roxbury.
I'm a resident of Roxbury, and my child, my boy, he lives in Roxbury. He lives in Roxbury.
Estoy aquí para levantar mi voz.
I am here to raise my voice.
Apoyo la inclusión.
I do support inclusion.
Pero como madre tengo preocupaciones de cómo funcionará este modelo.
However, I have to say that as a mother, I do have concerns on how the model, or this particular model, is going to work.
A los niños que son aprendices del idioma inglés.
Particularly to the kids that are English language learners.
Lo que necesitan es mejor plan por parte del distrito educativo.
So what is needed in this particular situation is better planning on behalf of the school committee, the educational district.
La superintendente prometió la alfabetización de los estudiantes en su idioma nativo.
The superintendent had promised literally in the native language for those students.
Como padre nos preguntamos quiénes van a ser los maestros.
So as parents, as we are, we ask ourselves the question, who are going to be the teachers in charge?
Y si tienen un personal suficientemente preparados para los alumnos de clase en ese modelo de inclusión.
And the other question is, in this particular inclusion model, if they have the talent, the human capital that is necessary to have there?
Como padre deben tomarnos en cuenta en la toma de decisiones.
So it is critical that, as parents that we are, they have to take our voices in consideration when it comes to decision-making.
Los estudiantes aprendiste el idioma inglés.
The English language learners.
Han aumentado de una manera drástica.
Had increased in numbers significantly, drastically.
Es importantes que nos tomen en cuenta.
It is very important to take in consideration our opinion.
Que hagan un plan, que esos estudiantes tengan éxito.
A plan has to be designed so that this student, this group of students, can be successful.
Muchas gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you very much to all, and have a good day to everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Morgan-Besser, followed by Sheri Callaher and Kim Emery. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Lauren?
Hi, my name is Lauren Morgan-Besser, and I'm a senior at Harvard. I volunteer as a civics teacher for fifth-grade students at Richard J. Murphy School in Dorchester. When I asked my fifth-grade students what are issues that they care about to change their lives, again and again, my students talked about their school lunches. I will read lines from letters that they wrote describing the situation. From Sarafina, "I eat the school lunch every single day, and it tastes terrible most days. A couple of times, I have eaten undercooked chicken. We don't have options, especially vegetarian options. If we don't get options, then we are stuck with either eating it or starving. I starve a lot." From Malihah, "A lot of the time, when people don't have anything to eat but they don't like the lunch, they are left with no options and often starve. A lot of the time, the food is stale, expired, or frozen. The food is very bland and tasteless, which causes children to throw away the food." From Christina, "There are no words to explain how bad the school lunch is here. This is to the point where it makes me want to cry. Students consistently describe the food making them nauseous, sick, and impacting their ability to learn. I urge you to do something to help our students and to make the school lunches better, to improve their lives. Thank you so much for your time."
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sheri Callaher.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. My name is Sheri Callaher. I'm a resident of Charlestown, Massachusetts. I have a child at Boston Latin, and I have a child that was in BPS and is no longer there, and that's what I wanted to primarily address. My younger son was placed in an IEP before he was four years old. Three years ago, we made the very difficult decision to pull him out of BPS because, unlike what Superintendent Skipper just promised, he was not receiving grade-level instruction. We wanted to ensure that he could long-term thrive and succeed, and so made the very difficult decision to send him to a private school that we commute to 40 miles away and spend an exorable amount of our resources on. We're very fortunate that we are able to do that. He's approaching ninth grade, and we needed to address getting him accommodations, primarily for things like the SSAT, so that he might have additional time to take the test. And there we encountered the incredibly Byzantine East Bloc obfuscation procedures of BPS in trying to ensure that our child could be assessed. We've received advanced college education. We're native English speakers, and we find this process incredibly difficult to navigate.
20 seconds.
We cannot find timelines delineated. We've been waiting since November 21st for somebody to tell us that they're going to assess our child. I can't imagine how hard this might be for somebody who is not a native English speaker.
Thank you, Sheri.
It's not acceptable.
Thank you for your commentary. Our next speaker is Kim Emery. Our next speaker is Kim Emery.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Kim. I'm a Boston resident and a BPS mom. I raise concern regarding the ongoing missed opportunities to build authentic family partnerships and cultivate students as leaders. Will the school committee and the superintendent commit to audit and enforce its own school-based management and shared decision-making model and adhere to federally required Title I protocols? For example, when it comes to the development of the Title I mandated school improvement plan, there is little to no family or student engagement at far too many schools. For those who try to convince schools or school families that the improvement plan is an instructional leadership team only document, it contradicts BPS's own shared decision-making model, since that group is made up only of educators. Any significant proposal coming out of I L T should be brought to the SSC to its elected reps from the BTU, parents, and high school students. This path to a school improvement plan is flawed when our capable student leaders in high schools and parent reps and elected BTU reps are excluded. It disregards the role of the SSC as it oversees all school-based committees, including the instructional leadership team. The federal Title I quality school plans core participants specifically include reference to students at the table, the very population that these decisions impact, they should involve them.
Thirty seconds.
The bargaining agreement, SSC manual and trainings affirm that the role of the school side council as established in the contract is to manage matters, including the development of a school quality plan. These questionable practices are at odds with shared decision-making and risk jeopardizing Title I funding for our students, our schools, and our district. Please safeguard our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to resume our in-person testimony with our final speaker, Farah Asaraj.
Good evening, Madam Chair, um, school committee members, all of the students and the parents and all the educators here. Um, I come to you as a former deputy CEO of Boston Public Schools and assistant superintendent for the OMMI office, amongst many roles that I was proud to serve in as a teacher and educator here for many, many years. Coupled with my activism and community organizing, I think it's really important that I stand here to speak for my daughter tonight. Um, who is a high school senior at New Mission High School. Camila Blackman has been doing a lot of speaking recently about these issues. Um, and we personally, and so I'm speaking as a parent, uh, that has personally observed, heard, and witnessed uh, particular comments and as well as witnessed not just the comments, but the ways in which the adults behave to silence students. Um, and I think that it's really important that we sort of take in account that when students are speaking, that we listen to them. And I appreciate Superintendent Skipper creating that space and wanting to meet with the students and to follow up as I know that this is a critical issue that pretty much across the country, we really are struggling to identify how to appropriately respond. However, I will say that comments such as these students don't know anything about this from administration. And I hope that you trust me enough as my colleagues and trusted friends here that you know that I say this to you with disheartened um, experience that if the students are facing particular adults that are silencing them and then the parents and the community members are hearing those students' actions being portrayed as troublemakers. Or that the reason, and I quote, that they're doing this is to leave the school grounds and to skip school. I think we have to be really careful and mindful that we are at a critical time in history in which these students should be our pillars in the community because they are actually standing for what we would want every other student to stand for, including our students who are Jewish faith, Christian faith, and Indian other faith, which is what? We are witnessing atrocities, killings and murderings and and we are seeing ourselves as a human being in a connection and a collective suffering that we all embody.
You're past your two minutes. Thank you.
I really urge you to think about your policies and your dismissal procedures, the ways in which you're engaging with students and activism. And think about what are the ways in which we're addressing them in their learning and curriculum in and outside of the school. Thank you very much for your time.
Chair, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and and thank you very much to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our only action item this evening is the grants for approval totaling one hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. I'll now open it up to the committee for any questions or comments. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. We'll now move right into our main report and update on the district wellness policy. I'll now invite Senior Executive Director of Health and Wellness Jill Carter and Marika Lear, Director of Wellness Policy and Promotions, to please step forward with their presentation. While they're getting settled, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening comments.
Uh, so tonight, thank you, Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, Liz.
No, I was just gonna ask her to get closer to the mic, but we're all set. Thank you.
I also feel like the mics are low tonight. Is that better? Okay. I usually don't have trouble projecting. So tonight you'll receive the annual update on the district wellness policy and recommendations for updating the policy language from district council co-chairs. Uh, so tonight we have, um, Senior Executive Director Jill Carter of the BPS Office of Health and Wellness, Boston Public Health Commission Deputy Commissioner PJ McCann, and Marika Lear, who's the Director of Wellness Policy and Promotions in the BPS Office of Health and Wellness. Uh, just as a reminder for the audience, the District Wellness Council is the superintendent's appointed advisory group for the development, implementation, and monitoring of school district policies related to student and staff wellness. In early two thousand twenty-three, the council voted to approve changes to the policy language. Those changes are now being presented to the school committee for your approval. The recommended policy language is related to three areas, school food and nutrition, physical activity, and health education. Additionally, the District Wellness Council is required to annually assess compliance with the BPS wellness policy, alternating between qualitative and quantitative annual assessments. The team here tonight will walk you through the specifics of that assessment. The twenty-one, twenty-two school year wellness policy annual report will publicly be available on the BPS Office of Health and Wellness webpage at bostonpublicschools.org or at the school committee website at bostonpublicschools.org forward slash lowercase school committee. I will now turn things over to Jill, PJ, and Marika.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Uh, good evening. My name is Jill Carter. I'm the Senior Executive Director for the Office of Health and Wellness. I'm here in my role as the co-chair of the District Wellness Council, the superintendent-appointed advisory committee that develops, recommends, reviews, and advises on health-related district policy. The District Wellness Council is also tasked with evaluating and reporting on the implementation of the wellness policy. I'm joined by my co-chair PJ McCann, Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Planning at the Boston Public Health Commission, and Marika Lear, the Director of Wellness Policy and Promotions from the Office of Health and Wellness. I'd also like to recognize and thank last year's District Wellness Council members and subcommittee co-chairs who helped gather the data and to thank the Office of Health and Wellness Policy and Evaluation Team that compiled and wrote the report on behalf of the council. Last, I'd like to thank, uh, school committee Chair Ms. Jerry Robinson for her participation and input as a District Wellness Council member. This report provides us an opportunity to examine how we've measured up to our commitment to wellness policies and practices, to reflect on how we adapt to the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, and to consider how we will expand what worked in order to help our schools plan for a better way forward. I invite my co-chair to provide an overview of the presentation objectives.
Thank you, Jill, and thank you to the committee for the opportunity to join you this evening. The District Wellness Council is an important example of the longstanding, close collaborative working relationship between the district and the Boston Public Health Commission. As Jill mentioned, I have the pleasure of serving as co-chair of the council. And I am joined on the council by leadership and staff from across many BPHC programs that work in partnership with BPHC on a daily basis and offer valued engagement and perspective, particularly in key roles as subcommittee chairs. BPHC views the work of promoting physical and behavioral health and well-being of BPS students as core to our work to advance health equity in Boston. And I speak for my colleagues in appreciating the role of the Office of Health and Wellness and the District Wellness Council in helping us work across agencies to understand the health needs of our students and identify actionable recommendations for improvement. As Jill mentioned, we're here tonight to provide an overview of the school year twenty-one, twenty-two District Wellness Policy Annual Report, which includes an assessment of the implementation of the policy and recommendations for improved compliance and to present policy change recommendations for the district wellness policy. Uh, as you may know, federal and state law require uh, districts to submit annual reports to the school committee and Department of Education, elementary and secondary education. Uh, in Boston, we alternate between qualitative and quantitative annual assessments. The report before you tonight is a quantitative assessment. Um, after a brief introduction to the wellness policy, we'll present our overall assessment of the policy implementation progress and the council's recommendations based on key findings of this report and work that's already underway. This report was completed at the end of last school year in in June and uses data from the school year twenty-one, twenty-two gathered from a variety of sources across the district's three divisions, academics, operations, and equity, family and community advancement. You can find the full list of sources in the appendices of this slide deck. Uh, this cross-division and departmental data collection and analysis takes a full year. And while this report covers the twenty-one to twenty-two school year, we will note more recent progress and updates when possible. So now I'll turn it back to Jill.
The BPS wellness policy aligns with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention whole school, whole community, whole child model, also called WISC model, or sometimes simply whole child. The wellness policy is an umbrella policy that links all district health-related policies under the eight policy components listed on the slide. This includes cultural proficiency, school food and nutrition promotion, comprehensive physical activity and physical education, comprehensive health education, healthy physical environment, safe and supportive schools, which includes culture and climate, social emotional learning, and student services, and health services, and staff wellness. Um, cultural proficiency stands as its own, on its own, to make explicit the commitment to culturally and linguistically sustaining practices in the wellness policy and the connections between health equity and learning. It is also woven throughout all the other policy areas. The policy was first passed in June two thousand six and was updated again in two thousand thirteen and then again in two thousand seventeen. Our experience during the pandemic has reinforced our collective commitment to the BPS Health and Wellness mission to actively promote the social, emotional, and physical health and wellness of all students to advance both their healthy development and readiness to learn. This mission aligns with the district's vision to provide an equitable and excellent well-rounded education for every child. We know that students who are health literate, have access to healthcare and services, and can freely and confidently practice health-promoting behaviors can engage more readily in the process of learning. This multifaceted policy helps us achieve this mission.
Um, so this table describes our council's estimation of the change in policy implementation between the school year nineteen-twenty report and the school year twenty-one, twenty-two. And it places, uh, the policy area on a scale of implementation. The icons on the left show whether the policy implementation, um, has improved, declined, or stayed the same. And the column on the right rates the policy area implementation from not implemented, minimally, partially, mostly, and fully implemented. Many policy areas saw implementation improvement, but were still considered only partially implemented. There were declines in implementation of school-based wellness councils with only sixty-nine percent of schools submitting wellness action plans. Both the school food and nutrition promotion policy area and the health services policy area are mostly implemented. You'll notice that for health services, there is an indication of both an increase and a decrease in implementation. And we wanted to acknowledge that while COVID-19 pandemic disrupted some of the regular functions of school nurses, it introduced increased responsibilities related to emergency management and infectious disease control. Lastly, health education policy area implementation declined and has been minimally implemented. This has been true since school year seventeen-eighteen annual report. The data shows that fourteen percent of schools in the district were meeting the minimal health education policy requirements. Well, twenty-six were approaching, twenty-six percent were approaching meeting the policy, and fifty-nine percent were not providing any health education. During the last school year, Esser funds allowed the district to support multiple initiatives that positively impacted the implementation of the policy, but they're not reflected here. It is estimated that over ninety-six million dollars were allocated to in in, uh, in a, in a, sorry, initiatives that supported the health and wellness of BPS. However, as we come to the end of the Esser funding cycle, the district must consider how we maintain and continue to improve the areas that have succeeded. The following slides will identify key recommendations from the report.
The written annual report contains multiple key findings and recommendations for each area of the policy. However, for this presentation, we are only able to highlight the areas that have remained stagnant and need sustained or renewed attention. But first, I'm going to share, uh, three overarching recommendations that would improve implementation of all areas of the of the policy. They include, first, improve communication of policies to school leaders and to staff to increase awareness and improve knowledge of policy requirements. Two, expand access to professional learning tools, resources, and support for staff that are responsible for each of the areas of the policy. And three, strengthen centralized coordination of strategies to improve BPS wellness policy and compliance. This includes the District Wellness Council as well as coordination across departments and the central office.
The next four recommendation slides organize the policy.
Briefly, I think it's, uh, we just wanted to note that we're on slide twenty-five. For the members.
Okay. Um, the next four policy recommendation, uh, slides organize the areas by whole food, uh, whole child elements. First, whole child culture and climate. The key, a key component of cultural proficiency is student and family engagement in school wellness councils. Very few schools list students or family members on their council rosters. Additionally, family and student representatives on District Wellness Council decreased during the pandemic. District Wellness Council has worked with the district parent and student advisory councils to identify representatives to serve on the council this year. The schools must continue to find ways The schools must continue to find ways to involve their students and family representatives. For safe and supportive schools, the majority of schools reported having at least two bullying prevention liaisons, an increase. However, only 10% of school leaders reported that all staff at their schools completed the annual training. We recommend increasing bullying prevention training opportunities for school staff and increasing awareness of existing resources and training. This recommendation aligns with the superintendent's student safety priority and the systemic improvement plan commitments. This recommendation is already underway, and additional Succeed Boston staff were hired this year to provide whole-school professional development. Staff wellness has been a growing concern for school and central office employees, and 50 out of the 84 wellness action plans submitted in school year 21-22 set goals to address staff wellness. ESER funds allowed us to hire a school staff wellness manager to support school initiatives and collaborate across central office departments. However, it is the council's recommendation that the district establish a district-level lead for staff wellness to coordinate a plan for initiatives moving forward. Additionally, the District Wellness Staff Wellness Subcommittee is currently working on updates to the staff wellness section of the district wellness policy to be brought to this committee at a later date.
On this slide, we will highlight recommendations for Whole Child Student Services, including health services and safe and supportive schools areas of the policy. First, nurses play a critical role in prevention and managing care for acute and chronic illnesses, including coordinating partner services and outside referrals. The data they collect is essential for monitoring student health and district-level improvements. We recommend the district sustain the improved capacity of the Health Services Department to support data collection and professional development of nurses that has been possible through ESER funding. Additionally, there is a need to improve operational support for the condom accessibility policy and the menstrual access program. Currently, there is no district budget to support condom accessibility. They are acquired through donations, and menstrual products are funded but lack a distribution system to make the products accessible where they are most needed, in bathrooms. The large increase in the total FTE available for student support services has been a big step forward for safe and supportive student services area of the policy. That said, only 67% of school leaders reported their schools have Tier 1, 2, and 3 supports fully in place. We need schools to continue improving their multi-tiered systems of support, as well as central office departments to improve coordination and alignment of their supports to schools. This recommendation aligns with the superintendent's academics and operation priorities and the systemic improvement plan commitments. We recognize that this work is underway.
Recommendations for school food and nutrition promotion and the healthy school environment policy areas support the whole-child physical environment. In school year 21-22 and more recently, improvements in kitchen infrastructure have allowed for a greater percentage of schools to provide onsite meal preparation. Competitive food and beverage policy communication and adherence continues to be an issue for schools. Only 39% of schools reported following all elements of that policy. We recommend improved management of contracts for vending machines in schools to ensure that contents meet district guidelines and to ensure sole responsibility of food and beverages sold to students remains with food and nutrition services. This recommendation is in line with state regulations. There have also been many infrastructure improvements made to support indoor air quality and water access at schools. The majority of outdoor play structures are in excellent condition, and the number of active school gardens and outdoor classroom spaces have increased. We recommend that the district continue to prioritize infrastructure elements that support student and staff wellness as the district moves forward with plans for the Green New Deal.
Lastly, we have three recommendations for Whole Child Instruction. As we reported in school year 1920, health education remains the most inequitably implemented area of the policy. Our students are not consistently receiving the skills-based, standards-based, health education required to develop health literacy. The District Wellness Council recommends that BPS make it a priority to improve implementation of health education in both elementary and secondary schools through investments in health ed teachers, curriculum, and professional learning. We want students to graduate being able to set health goals, navigate their own and their family's healthcare, build strong relationships, and maintain their health and wellness throughout their lives. We have seen over the past couple of years a rise in the concern about mental health and incidence of bullying, vaping, marijuana use, and strong Tier 1 health education can proactively address all of these health concerns. Physical education and physical activity build students' physical literacy and impacts their physical and mental well-being. Key findings show that nearly all schools serving grades pre-K to 8 met the PE requirements. Almost all schools with grades 9 through 12 offer some PE, but only 55% offered PE in all those grades as required. Thanks to ESER and MasCor investments, all schools serving grades 9 through 12 offered PE starting last year. That said, not all high school students in all grades are receiving PE. Therefore, we recommend improving PE offerings for high schools through investments in PE teachers, space improvements, equipment, curriculum, and professional learning, and improving schools' master schedules planning to include time for PE. Finally, we know that social emotional development in students is critical for learning and well-being. Given the data and the mental health concerns for our students and staff and the schools' needs for training on social emotional learning, the district recommends strengthening Tier 1 social emotional learning through investments in transformative cell professional development instructional coaches so that all staff at schools have the adequate training on BPS cell competencies. And as stated earlier, we also recommending improving the coordination and alignment across central offices to strengthen Tier 1 MTSS work. Over the past year and a half, the ESER funds and MasCor investments have allowed us to address some of these issues just mentioned. We recommend that these investments be maintained, and in the cases of health ed and phys ed, expanded. Whole Child Instruction develops students' knowledge, skills, and self-efficacy to engage in healthy behaviors and care for themselves, their families, and their communities. That concludes our report, but I'm going to turn it over to PJ to brief you on the policy change recommendations that we're proposing.
Thank you, Jill, and this is, I don't have a slide number on the master deck, but it's the summary of policy proposals. I think we have it up here now. So as we mentioned earlier, the District Wellness Council's subcommittees review the wellness policy language and consider potential updates each year. Over the course of last year, subcommittees working in three policy areas identified the need for updates, and the full District Wellness Council voted to recommend these changes. The three areas where amendments are proposed are health education, food and nutrition, physical education, and physical activity. First, the proposed revisions to the health education policy would align the policy language with more current, less stigmatizing language and language used in the fields and by other partners in the field. So you can see that in the first bullet there. Second, the changes in the food and nutrition policy would link in the new BPS menu and ingredient guidelines, in keeping with federal requirements to have those guidelines linked into the policy itself, and changes to also articulate that the food and nutrition services is solely responsible for food and beverages sold to children during the school day in accordance with state regulations and Food Nutrition Circular of '4. Lastly, in the area of physical education and physical activity, a proposed policy recommendation includes incorporating language from the Code of Conduct, which prohibits restricting physical activity opportunities as a form of punishment in the wellness policy, so that's to align best practice and our existing policies with each other. So we're happy to take any questions, but I do know that Jill has a closing statement first.
Promise this is the closing statement. This work takes a team to create a collective impact, everyone rowing in the same direction at the district level and at the school level. It takes a whole-school, whole-community, whole-child approach. Collective impact requires a common agenda, a shared measurement system, mutually reinforcing activities, continuous communication, and a backbone structure. We need to continue to improve communications at every level in the district and strengthen our internal systems to coordinate this multifaceted work, ensuring our activities and investments are mutually reinforcing. By fully implementing the wellness policy, we will create healthier and more welcoming and affirming schools through improved instruction, student supports, school climate, and physical environments. This will reduce health inequities and improve student learning and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for your report and your entire team for their dedication to this critical work. And now we'll open it up to members for their comments.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, y'all. I just wanted to commend definitely on the work that the district is doing when it comes to language, when it comes to our policies. A lot of times, our intentions is there, but if we're not intentional about the diction that we're using, we might actually be causing more harm. The second thing that I wanted to address around food and nutrition, really loving to hear about onsite preparation. I think also something that I've heard a lot is about us having cultural, religious menus, and I think if we're talking about inclusive classrooms, I think our kitchens themselves and the services that we provide when we think about food needs to also take that into consideration, given that our city is such a melting, you know, if you think about it's a melting pot. I even think about those are opportunities to actually engage with a lot of our families and community members and small businesses that represent or come from those, you know, communities, so something to think about. The third thing that I wanted to talk about is menstrual products and periods. Loving that we're trying to break the stigma there. I know Love Your Men's is, it is a nonprofit organization, has done great work with Boston, with our libraries in the past. Even if the district right now does not have its own programming, I think referring our young girls and our young boys to the programmings that they do have, because sometimes we're always talking about the young girls, like if I have a son, like I want my son to also learn about these things, because maybe one day he wants to be a father of a young girl, right? So thinking about that as well, like it's not just the girls that need to engage in this matter, not only about menstrual products, but also when we think about birth control, condoms, and all the other constructs that sometimes like we don't talk about, right? We limit our young adults to think only about condoms when there's a lot other, they're expensive, of course, but I think just access to information is important. So just wanted to highlight, Love Your Men's, we'd love to know if you all have done any work with them or have brought them to the district even to be consulted, because they've done a lot, not only in Massachusetts, but even in Kenya and San Tamey, Principi, they're literally like going outside of, you know, in the diasporas to do that type of work. So yeah, just wanted to make some comments there, but we'd love to hear a little bit more on what we're doing around menstrual products in our schools, if you have specifics, soup or anyone in the room. Thank you.
I can comment on that a little bit. The school food part, we could get some more, maybe help somebody else in the audience on that, because I think they really have more details that we can get back to. But the menstrual products, the work on menstrual products and condom availability, it's a, we collaborate between the Office of Health and Wellness, which is where health education lives, and Health Services, where obviously the nurses, central office nursing support is, and we work together on both of those programs. The menstrual products, we also work very closely with the Office of Women Advancement and City Hall, and so actually the whole program started as sort of initiative coming to the city to BPS in 2019. We were asked to put in a proposal for that. Maybe you were on the other side at that point with that, but so we, right now, there are materials available in all of our schools that serve grades 3 through 12. They are available, the Health Services Department orders them, and they are sent to all the nurses' offices, and then the nurses have them available through their office and/or there are other staff, teachers or support staff that also, you know, want to be an access point, so they can have little stations where kids can come. So that's kind of the way we're, you know, doing it right now.
So we didn't get the vending machines. I know that was definitely something money-wise was definitely a challenge, but just wondering if that conversation can come back as we are thinking about implementing.
Yeah, that's what we want to do, is more of a pilot with infrastructure available in bathrooms, and that is something that we would like to do, is to try to, and we've had conversations with, you know, facilities to try to get a couple.
Yeah, because I'm thinking about the Green New Deal, right? So how can we look into whatever infrastructures that we're creating, that we're thinking about these type of nuances to make these resources available? So thank you.
Yeah, there's a number of organizations that will give you the actual vending machine. The issue is, we have to, we have to, one is the budget to order the supplies, and then two, it's also determining who stocks the machines. We actually brought this into Somerville when I was there and did it in the high schools and the middles. So it's something that we'll continue to have conversation, because it is really important.
I want to say thank you very much for doing this. Thank you for taking the time and thinking about the physical, the mental health, the health in every regard about our students. I thank you very much for that. Like you said, thank you very much for taking the time and thinking about the physical, the mental health, the health in every regard about our students. I thank you very much for that. It's always been a request of parents, to have more social and emotional support, to be able to be with them.
It's been always a top priority from the parent's perspective to have this social emotional support, and to have someone that is caring about them frequently all the time, that support is critical for their parents.
In your recommendations, the education about health, you're recommending improving the implementation of the requirements of education at the primary levels and secondary levels through the investments that are necessary in superior education regarding the curriculum and regarding the professional learning. That is part of the recommendations you're making. My question would be, considering the scarcity of our resources, the limitation of the resources, that was the first part, and the second part was conveyed in English.
So just to clear-
My question would be, considering that we're in the district now and the lack of professors that we need, can you tell me what is the process for the district to say that? I'll say it in English. The first part she said in Spanish, you have to convey the first part and the second part, you understood, of course. She said, considering this scarcity of our resources, the limitation of the resources, that was the first part of, the second part was conveyed in English.
So just to clear, so you're asking, what is it that the district would need to do to be able to implement more health education in?
When you mentioned the recommendations, you thought about the professionals, how to present it to the district, how they would do it. How would they do it? What are the recommendations of you? So you did present a set of recommendations based in some professional availability of resources of talent. How are you planning to allocate the resources based on your recommendations in this particular regard?
Right. Thank you. I think, I, I think, well, first, health education teachers or all teachers are usually a part of a school's budget. So currently, schools are, are not, you know, able to allocate funds for health ed teachers in their budgets. And so what we're, you know, we are asking is to make sure that schools have adequate resources so that they could allocate some of their funds for a teacher. I don't know if Superintendent Skipper wants to add to that.
So I think, I guess I would answer this twofold. One is, there's been a deeper investment on the general budget to support more health and phys ed, recognizing the importance. Esser dollars allowed in so many areas, public education to do things that frankly, they should have been able to do all along, but it was only because of Esser dollars that we were able to accelerate. Those Esser dollars are now ending. And so like in many initiatives, we will have struggle between what we can afford versus what we believe is needed. And that holds true not just in health and phys ed, but in lots of other areas of the organization. The hope is that between school budgets and district budget, we are able to continue, or perhaps we might need to slow it with the idea that once we've kind of come down off of Esser, we can accelerate in certain areas. But that is kind of the, the challenge that I think Jill and the team are sort of raising. We know it works. We know what we want to be able to do. It's having the monetary resource to do it all.
And I do think that we've made great strides on physical education. Last year was the first time in more than 20 years that every single school was offering physical education. And it was kind of phased in over time and, and we're almost there. So that is such a great success story. So I think that's where we're, you know, but health education is very far behind in terms of the allocations of funds, even with the, the Esser funds. And we were able to get a few positions with some other grants. But it, yeah, so thank you for the question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation tonight. Really thoughtful in how you break it into the different areas. I'm not going to try to repeat what my colleagues asked, though I do have four questions. The first is, I'm curious how, at the very beginning, when you have the chart of change in implementation and level of implementation, you either kind of have a thumbs up, thumbs down, or, you know, no change. The one that struck me, you have no change for food nutrition and you have it as mostly implemented. And I think about, you know, the span of time, as you mentioned, right? You've been talking about 20 years and I haven't been here that long, but I've been here a while. And what's happened in food nutrition has been great. And the movement towards fresh, you know, fresh and healthy food served to our students in, in, that is prepared onsite was tremendous. And then COVID really knocked us back. And now we have a new head of food nutrition. Is she your chief? Yeah, Tiana, right?
The director, executive director.
Director, executive director, right. And folks are very excited about what she's bringing to the table. But when we still have, what do you say, 56% of schools offer cafeteria meals for lunch, 44% provided vended meals. And, you know, we heard in public comment tonight about, I think it was a parent who was talking about the Murphy School, the vended meals. I'm not quite sure I would agree with mostly implemented. I think we still, I think we're doing great work there, but to me, we're still partially implemented there. So help me out with how you, how that gets set.
Well, I'll comment and then, Rike, you can chime in. There are a lot of indicators that we set up for each of the areas of the policy. And so when we look across the many different indicators, food and nutrition, you know, has implemented a number of them. I, and I do want to also recognize that, obviously, FNS, the Food and Nutrition Services Team, has made even more progress in some of the numbers that you reported out now because this was school year 2021, so their data would be even a little bit better currently. But, but I do understand.
A little bunch came on in the past year, right?
Yes, that's right. Yes. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge that. But, Rike, I don't know if you want to comment at all about why we chose mostly versus partially?
These kind of conversations and decisions are, take place within the subcommittees. There's a, there are conversations that they have around the policy implementation and then it's brought to the District Wellness Council. I think that the other thing that was happening was the, the, the new vended meal, the vendor that they were using, people felt excited about what they were doing. So even though we prefer to have onsite meal preparation, they felt that the options that they were being able to provide for the vended meals were still high quality with a, a, a local vendor being able to serve fresh food. So I think that was part of the decision, but I definitely hear, you know, what the, the public comment person, the comment that was made. And I know that our colleagues in FNS continue to reach out to schools and families and try to address the, you know, cultural diversity of our food and as well as the, the quality.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to push you, right? You're, you're looking at the overall policy. I was just trying to understand how you made those decisions. It's far be it for me to second guess it, but when I notice something like that, it just caused me to ask how you arrive at it. I'm not, I'm not putting you on the spot about food nutritional services. We haven't.
This is a favorite topic of mine. So the, the thing is, I, I think post-pandemic, that 21, 22 school year was very difficult. To, to be true, truthful even last year, because hiring staff to operate the kitchens, right? So that's kind of one, but I think if you, I think the other thing is that there is a part in here about educating students and staff on nutrition. And that's a piece that we continue and need to work on, right? Which is what is, what is nutritious eating? I think there's a vision within, you know, within food service right now around integrating salad bars back and really about helping to educate families and students of the value of nutritious food and what that looks like. So I think it's sort of when we think a whole child, one aspect is the actual food, but then there's also the education that surrounds that. And that happens in the curriculum, that happens with the, the teachers. And that's an area with PD and with not only, you know, our, our shop, but then also within Food and Nutrition Services that is going to take leaps and bounds over the next year.
And I will just add, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, also from our table, it might, it's not fully implemented. So there's still, nobody is fully implemented, so there's more growth everywhere. And I'll just take an opportunity to say, that's why also we want health education, because the health education includes the nutrition education. So that is one of the areas of the Food and Nutrition Services policy that is not implemented. I mean, not implemented well, because so few students have access to nutrition education right now. So.
Gotcha. Well, I, for one, want to see, as much as I appreciate the prepared foods vendor is a big improvement and is a local company, et cetera. I'm just such a big advocate on food prepared freshly in the, in the individual schools, whenever possible, which gets us back to our facilities plan, right? The chair and I were in a school recently where they had plenty of room for cafeteria and yet they were preparing prepared foods because it just hadn't happened yet. So I'd like to move on to phys ed and what really catches me about that. And you did mention it, and thank you, very briefly, is this particularly ties to Mass Core? Right? And that's part of our requirements now. So you mentioned it briefly, but do we think we are on track to hit the phys ed requirements in Mass Core? And I know that gets us back to the Esser question, right? Those were some of the positions we were funding by Esser. When those go away, are the schools going to be able to continue, particularly with regards to Mass Core?
It is one big circle. So this is true, right? And I think, you know, one of the things that with Mass Core that we want for the high schools to take on, right? As we, you know, continue to use dollars that we have to kind of push the ratios is, is an ownership of the staffing that we've been able to provide centrally. And so I think that that's going to be one thing in the budget season, at the high school level in particular, with Mass Core, is to start to look at, you know, what, what has been funded on, let's say, soft dollars and how does that get incorporated into the hard dollars so that it's not seen as a negotiable going forward? There is an art to that. There's a lot of tensions on the budget on the school's side. And so we will have to really work with our schools, particularly our high schools with Mass Core, to make sure that we don't backslide. We also have to recognize that sometimes there are budget years in which the tension is such that you can't accelerate as much as you'd like to in a given area. It doesn't mean it's not a priority. It just means that sometimes you have to address other things in the budget that current year. And I think for us, the Esser and the Esser Cliff and what we are calling Step Down, that that is the part that we have to manage this upcoming budget.
Thank you. With regard to that, then, moving on to my third of four points, we did have this slide about Esser two or three funds supporting wellness. And so thank you for that. And this may be a more appropriate question for next week, when we're having a high-level budget one. But when I see before and after-school programs with 7 million of the 96, what percent of that is what we spend on before and after-school overall, you know, the fifth quarter as we call it? And again, I can defer that question to next week. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. I mean, I. We can definitely break that down, but I think, you know, roughly, the, the fifth quarter and the summer budget tends to be around five. And then the before and after schools and other things like acceleration tends to kind of get it up to that seven. So that will be definitely a piece of what we address in, in budget, in budget presentation. Also to recognize that summer programming is budgeted like a lag almost because it's, it's out of the fiscal cycle.
It's out of the, it's out of the next fiscal, right? So we have already spent this year's summer program.
Correct, yeah. That's right.
Gotcha, that's right.
Like now we would be managing efficiency.
Understood. Thanks. And, and my final question is on the long-time, long-term data. I assume this is a survey that is done. And, and I'm not, there's only one question I had that just struck me as, whenever I talk to school leaders, this figure didn't sound right. I'm almost going to turn to our student rep to sanity, check it with him, Mr. Mator, when it says currently use electronic vapor products, 9.7% or 10% of the students report using, report vaping.
Probably across all grades?
That's what I was wondering, are we like, is that?
You could be looking at, are you looking at, there, there's high school data and there's middle school data? And this is from?
That would be the high school YRBS data.
Said high school data.
Okay.
That's, that's a lot.
It just, it's really struck me as out of whack from what I hear when I talk to school leaders who really talk a lot about the problems with vaping.
And I'll say from the Boston Public Health Commission's perspective, that, you know, it, it remains a priority. I, I think we did see some gains in, in terms of reductions in, in youth vaping rates after the flavor ban and 21-year-olds purchase age regulations went into effect. But I, I think we've also seen that the wording of some of the YRBS questions makes it difficult to get at, the, the use of specific products. We, we found this with when youth were going to certain kinds of cigars. If you asked, do you smoke a cigar, you'd get 4% rate. But if you asked if you smoked Dutch Masters, you'd get 9.9. So I, I think that there's, there's a, a challenge with the wording of the question where we are hoping to make, you know, continued progress. But I, I hear you, that, that the number is tough to believe. But the smoking numbers, I'll say, have continued to decline.
Yeah, and I, I think to build off of that, that the way that question is worded is in the context of tobacco use and nicotine. So what we've also heard anecdotally from schools is that kids are vaping marijuana. So it could be that when students are answering that question, they're, they're like, oh, no, I don't, I don't vape nicotine.
Yeah, it just, I, I just, I hope we don't make decisions based on that because when I talk to school leaders, and I'm looking at Mr. Mator, he's literally chuckling as, as I'm saying this. I mean, school leaders are reporting this is a big, big issue.
And we're definitely working across, with Student Support Services, Health Services Succeed Boston on addressing some of these things. So we definitely hear the same thing and are not, you know, 9%, you know, doesn't sound a lot. I will say that across the country, remember, this data was collected in the fall of 2021. That is when we were still coming out of COVID. And what we saw were a lot of youth risk behaviors went down. Not all, but some. And that could be because you're also, you know, you're not in, out and around as much. Our new data, you know, we just did the survey again and, and finished it up in June. So when we get it back from the CDC in another month or two, we'll be happy to share that. And maybe the numbers will reflect what anecdotally we're hearing about from our school leaders. But we hear you. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for the work on this.
Thank you.
I understand there's a staffing problem, but I'm just curious
how the supports are being implemented in every school?
I think if we have a question about staffing around mental health, I would ask maybe for.
Yeah, so I can, I can try to get at this one. So Diego, when we talk about social emotional learning, that is working in the classrooms to help teachers embed questions and skills for students. Then there's like when a student needs to talk with a counselor or like they're going through something and they need an adult support, that actually gets handled through our Student Support Department, right? So what, what these guys are sort of talking about is we have seed coaches that work in our schools. And the goal is really to help in the classroom, in the curriculum, actually be able to kind of build up like, you know, the capacity for students, you know, in different areas that are what we would call social emotional. Yeah. I know what you're saying, though. It's, it's Student Support Department.
Yeah, and I know this report is because it cuts across so many different departments that you might have specific questions that we're happy to take back and get answers to, to from the departments that would be able to specifically, you know, answer questions about staffing and where we are at. So happily, we'll definitely write that down and can get back to you with that.
Thank you so much for the report. I just have a couple of questions because many of my questions have been asked. Thank you. One is, can you talk a little bit more about what is entailed in the staff wellness aspects of what you're doing?
Want to take that?
Sure. It's actually a part of my team in the Office of Health and Wellness. And it began with work with a program that we have called the Wellness Champion Program. And that allows schools to identify a staff person who will focus on a specific area of the policy, get training, get technical assistance, and implement an initiative in their school. So we have a staff member that, that has been helping with that for the past, I think, three years now. And it began with work with a program that we have called the Wellness Champion Program. And that allows schools to identify a staff person who will focus on a specific area of the policy, get training, get technical assistance, and implement an initiative in their school. So we have a staff member that, that has been helping with that for the past, I think, three years now. And she is now the, the Staff Wellness Manager, and doing that work kind of on a, on a, that's all she does. And so she's been working with, she had 21 schools last year and 30 schools this year in that program. And so, working with schools, hearing about what's going on there, and helping in a variety of ways, one of which is often just being able to have a staff space. There are a lot of schools that don't have staff lounges, or they're not welcoming spaces. So we've been able to provide through grant funding and Esser funding in the past two years, funds to just create those spaces and make them more welcoming and engaging for the staff there. The other thing that we've been working on this year is getting appliances for the staff. There are a number of schools that either don't have fridges or microwaves, or they have, they're not, they don't, they poorly operate. So we've been working with school leaders and other staff at schools to be able to get them appliances for their staff lounges. And then there's been some work kind of at the district level to try and figure out policy-wise and, and try to work across the different departments that touch on staff wellness.
Got it good?
I think my greatest concern, and others have raised it too, is as we look at next year and budgeting, and looking at how far you've come, what kinds of things are going to be able to be sustained without additional investment in terms of the investments that have already been made? For a school, will people be able to consider what they can continue to sustain by virtue of what already exists? Both for the staff as well as for students, or are there areas of greatest priority that if there were some key area that it's critical for us to look at making sure it's fully funded? What would that be, from your perspective?
Well, that's, that's a really good question, and I know that there's a lot of folks considering the various priorities that, because as Marika mentioned, there were $96 million that somehow touched on one or other of the policy area. So I think within our recommendations, we've identified the places that we feel are important. You know, making sure that there are teachers in schools that can teach physical education, can teach health education, making sure that we have instructional coaches or other types of support folks that can keep doing the capacity building that we've begun for two years, but we haven't actually made it through all schools, right? So, you know, I, I do think it's a difficult conversation, and I, I heard Superintendent Skipper say, you know, sometimes you have to also think not about just one year, but a phased-in approach, and thinking about a systematic plan, because if we do have priorities and we can't achieve them all right now, how can we say we'll, we'll, you know, we'll inch our way through the various priorities till we get to full implementation? So, yeah, I'll, maybe you want to comment?
Yes, no, I think that's, I think that's right. And I, I also think like, for instance, one of the places that we can work in the inclusive education planning is to give access, right? In the areas of the arts and phys ed and music and so forth, to students who previously wouldn't have had access, right? So phys ed's a great example where we're really, you know, it, it just, the amount of work we're doing right now with adaptive phys ed, right, that never would have been done previously. And I think that that's an opportunity, from a cost neutral standpoint in a lot of ways, to ensure that students who are in our schools, who through their IEP previously, because they were in a separate class, never got that chance to be, to be included in a class, can now actually be included in a class. And that doesn't necessarily take more money. It just takes scheduling, training, and, you know, making sure that the, the student has access, right, as part of it. So I think that, you know, there are going to be some areas that aren't as necessarily resource intensive, but they meet us where we are in terms of our inclusive education planning. And then I think that there's other areas to Vice Chair O'Neill's question about MasCor that is going to be important for schools to internalize, and start to see this as something that isn't an option. This is something that they need to do and budget for as they would English or social studies or so forth.
Are there any more questions? If not, thank you again, and we look forward to taking action on the revised wellness policy at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers.
Thank you. Any new business? No, thank you. This concludes our business for this evening. The next hybrid school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, December 13th, at 6:00 PM here at the Bowling Building. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good night.